Okay, good morning. I'm gonna call the order. The October 7th, 2019, regular meeting of the Haywood County Board of Commissioners, and our first order of business will be our Pledge of Allegiance. And after that, I'm gonna ask our chaplain, Reverend Patrick Womack, to come forward and give our invocation. So if everyone's standing for the pledge at this time.
Our Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which we sustain, one nation, under God, indivisible, with due diligence.
May we pray. Our Father in Heaven, on this day, we come to you with thanksgiving in our hearts for all of your blessings of life. We thank you for the opportunity to meet here, as we're grateful for these, our commissioners, who are here to conduct the business of this county. We pray your blessing on all that transacts here. We pray that in conversation and the decisions that you will guide, giving wisdom, enabling these good men to make decisions that are in keeping with the best of all that is good. And on this day following, when we have observed, remembering those who have fallen in the service of our nation as firefighters, we're grateful, oh Lord, for sacrifices made on behalf of all of us. Praying that you will grant that safety and protection may be given to those who serve in all positions in this county. And in every way, Lord, as we go about our lives, praying that you might grant to us all that is needed to succeed and to love our neighbors even as we love ourselves. For these things we pray, in the name of Jesus, amen.
Okay, our next order of business would be public hearings, but we have none. And then our next order of business will be a public comment session. Would anyone care to address the board at this time? I have no one signed up. Okay, seeing that, I'll move on to constituent concerns. And Mark, do you have any this morning?
I do not.
Okay.
Brandon?
Yes, I had several constituent concerns, but I've already gotten with Mr. Moorhead and took care of them.
Okay.
Same way, I've had a few calls about certain things, and staff's been able to help me out, so...
Okay, I appreciate the staff doing that, taking care of questions. I just wanted to comment on Claude Messer, a firefighter that lost his life in Jonathan Creek. And I just wanna give his family condolences, as well as the community. And I know the county and the community has lost a great person that was there, always there early in the morning, and was really instrumental in the Jonathan Creek Fire Department. So we miss him, and we thank him for all his service. The other item I wanted to mention is that I had gone to a fundraiser for Sarge's this past week, and I just wanted to let everyone know that Sarge's, they partner with the county and do adoptions at the animal shelter. And they've probably, since they've been in existence, they've been able to adopt out over 11,000 animals that they've saved. And I think just this year, if I got my numbers right, it's 421 from the animal shelter. And when Sarge's does adoptions, they, one of the great things in this partnership is they actually put out more money than they take in for the adoptions. So their fundraisers are real important that we get, you know, when they have those fundraisers, because it supplements their income from the adoption. So we're thankful for them, and we appreciate their service to the county. And this just shows how a partnership can really help our community. It saves taxpayers' money, and more importantly, it saves lives of some of God's creatures. They were telling me that over in, if they'd gotten a call from down east, I think there was a county that had a 75,000, I mean 75% euthanasia rate, so 75% of the animals were being killed in the shelter. And so they had called Sarge's in the animal shelter up here to find out what they could do. The euthanasia rate, I think it's either 3.9 or 3.6% now. And if that's not the highest in the state, it has to be one of the highest. So I just wanna thank them for their efforts in doing the adoptions and for this partnership. And I wanna let the county commissioners know that this is one partnership that's working. Okay, does anyone have anything else? Okay. Okay, next, I wanted to talk about, or I'm sorry. The next order of business will be administrative agency reports and presentations. And we have an introduction of new county employees, and they'll have our county manager, Brian Moorhead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have five new employees to announce. I think a few of them couldn't be here, because they are actually at work this morning. At Health and Human Services, we have Joanne Rinker, please stand, Kimberly Ward, and Rachel Rivas. From the Sheriff's Office, we have Shelley Long and Vincent Tropey Jr.
Well, thank you for being here. Thank you for coming this morning. I guess everyone else maybe didn't get the memo, or decided they didn't wanna come up, or had to go to work, or whatever. But thank you for coming on board at Haywood County. We always like to take a moment to introduce our new employees. Our former inter-county manager, Joel Mashburn, started that, and I think it was a great idea. Okay, our next order of business will be request, I mean, I'm sorry, the report on the year-end occupancy tax numbers for the Haywood County Tourism Development Authority. We have our TDA Executive Director, Lynn Collins, here this morning to report on that. And I think she's got a pair of points for it, so welcome, Lynn.
Good morning. I'm here today to give you the year-end report on the occupancy tax that funds the Haywood County Tourism Development Authority. And I'm happy to report that we had a good tourism year. On your first slide, you will see this is the report for the 3%. As you will recall, we're different from any other county in the state with how our tax is broken down. We collect a 4% occupancy tax on all short-term rentals, and our tax is broken down with 3% coming directly back to the TDA for marketing the county overall. And the remaining 1% is divided up and goes back to the zip code communities where it's collected. So you will see separate reports for the 3% and the 1%. The first sheet is for the 3%. You will see that we have, on the left-hand column, it's the occupancy tax projections, and then the second column is the actual amount. And we finished the year 4% ahead of budget. And then over towards the right, you will see the 17, 18 actual collections, and you will see there that we finished the year 5% ahead of the previous year. Every month, we track the occupancy by category, and on the legend that's on the bottom of the slide, you will see the different categories that we break our accommodations up into. And it is up to the owner as to which category they want their property to be in. So when you look on our website, and you look in our visitor guides, these are the categories as to how our accommodations in the county are broken down. I wanted you to see this slide, just because it shows, it's good information to have and know how our accommodations are doing by segment, but also it shows seasonality. And if you look at this over the years, you can see it's easy to help trend your accommodations by category based on seasonality. Just as a, for instance, on this, you will see in the month of September that hotel motels are the highest category. And that directly relates to the hurricane that we had last year in September, and all the evacuees coming into the area that filled up our hotels in the month of September. Also, you will see seasonally, some fluctuation in December on vacation rentals and hotel motel. And depending on what kind of weather we have over the holiday season, will depend upon which one of those does well. If it's cold, but we don't have snow, your vacation rentals are gonna do better. If we have snow, your hotel motels are gonna do better, because all these Florida folks can't get to those vacation rentals. So it has a lot to do with weather and seasonality. Also, we had a very good ski season this past year, so that's reflected in this as well. On the next slide, you have the 1% report, and this is broken down by zip code, and you have three columns per zip code. One is the actual collection from the year just finished, one is the projections for the year, and the third column on the right is the actual collections from the previous year. So as you can see, most of the zip codes had a very good year. In Lake Geneska, they did have a slight downturn, but the reason for that, once again, goes back to that September and the hurricane. They had a large conference booked for that weekend, and the conference, the group, actually canceled late on Friday afternoon. And the hurricane came in that weekend, and unfortunately, by the time they canceled, it was too late for us to get them filled up with evacuees. So they took a big hit as a result of that. As you can see, on the very bottom row of that, it shows the percentage by municipality or by zip code as to how much each zip code accounts for in the overall collection of the occupancy tax. If anybody has any questions, I'll be happy to answer them as we go along. The next slide shows you some examples of the 1% funding projects by zip code. These are certainly not all of them, but I just wanted to give you an idea of the types of things that each of the zip codes are using their funding to do. By law, only up to 1/3 of the funding can be used on tourism-related projects, which could be infrastructure or a few other things in that line item. You will see that some of the categories, most of them are marketing dollars. Some of the things that have been funded throughout the years on the tourism-related side, in Maggie Valley, they did lights and electric on the festival grounds, they've done a great job with new parks along the Greenway. Canton has used theirs for matching grant as far as their bike and pedestrian plan that they had done. They have used some of it for Sorals Street Park. Clyde has done downtown upgrade, they put in new trashcans and new benches. So over the years, there have been several different things that have been done. But once again, that is limited to 1/3 of the pot of money that they have. So in some cases, that's not very much money, when you look at 1/3 of their individual The next slide is, I just wanted to give you an idea of how we do some of our advertising. In Maggie and Waynesville, because they're the two largest zip code collectors, they have dedicated a portion of their funds for co-op marketing. And so, working with the TDA and our ad agency, we are able to do something cooperatively and leverage that 1% money against the 3% money. So you will see here an ad that actually is in the October issue of our state magazine. And by being able to leverage that money and cooperatively work with Maggie, Waynesville, and Haywood County, we're able to do some things that we probably would not be able to do with the budget we have otherwise. So this shows, talks about the county overall, and then a section for Maggie and a section for Waynesville. So we anticipate getting very good results from that. And the other thing about this is, you will notice that it looks really more like advertorial, it doesn't look like your regular ad. The agency has worked very hard to start doing more of this format for us, because it does get more attention in the publication than being stuck in the section where you've got, you know, six ads on a page together. So they've done a great job helping us out on that. And the last sheet I have for you is the economic impact of travel on Haywood County. Tourism in Haywood County generated expenditures of about 190 million in 2018, that's a 4.21 increase from '17. It accounts for more than 1,840 jobs, and $42 million in payroll, and also quite a bit in local and state tax revenues. The most important thing on this sheet of paper is the part where I have bolded, and that is, as a result of tourism in Haywood County, this tax savings per Haywood County resident, not household, but resident, is $276.84. So that's how much more each of us would be paying in taxes if we did not have tourism in Haywood County. Any questions?
Anybody have any questions?
I've got one on the second sheet that you were showing about how they were used, just curious. I was noticing in July and August, and then again in February, I'm sorry, not February, July, August, and November, there is some campgrounds that are listed, but they're not anywhere else. Do you think people aren't coming here and using those now?
No. Occupancy tax isn't collected on campgrounds. Only if they have a little cabin on the RV, you know, in an RV park or something, is occupancy tax collected. Unfortunately, for some reason that I don't recall what it was, campgrounds were not included in the original legislation when it was written, so occupancy tax is not charged on that.
Any other questions?
Are you excited about the potential for Ghost Town?
Absolutely, I'm excited about the potential of any new product we can get. Thank you.
I just wanna make a comment, you know, when you look at the economic impact of tourism, and I know Kurt can attest to this, we meet people all the time that vacationed here and then moved here. And so we're doing work for them, and I'm sure Brandon's doing work for them, and probably maybe even Mark, you know, because you, when people move here, then they use our services and buy things and stuff like that. So to get, to get people here, the tourism, that's what gets them here, gets them familiar with the place, makes them fall in love with the place, so it keeps going, you know, other than just this, so...
It all starts with a visit.
That's right, that's right, yes.
Thank you.
Just another comment, Kevin, I know that a lot of times you hear folks that don't like tourism, and this points out how important it is to us, you know, saving each person and the residents, $276, a little over that, that's pretty big, that's pretty huge. So tourism is important to Haywood County, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lynn. Okay, our next item under administrative agency reports is Eagle View, Eagle View Presentation for Countywide Oblique Imagery. And we have our Tax Administrator, Stephanie Parkins, and Eagle View Direct Sales Manager, Joe Wilson. Welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners. I have the privilege to introduce to you Mr. Joe Wilson. He has enjoyed extensive GIS career that spans nearly 25 years. He began his career in the military as a United States Navy Seabee. After honorably serving our country, Mr. Wilson entered college at UNC Charlotte and has selected to work as a GIS intern with Mecklenburg County in 1995, and with Esri in 1996. After earning his BS degree in environmental science, Mr. Wilson was recruited by Esri Charlotte in 1997 to serve the GIS community in North and South Carolina. He has also held GIS positions as a consultant, developer, trainer, and GIS manager. Mr. Wilson currently serves the Carolinas as the Eagle View Direct Manager for pictometry imagery captures. I'll now turn it over to Mr. Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Thank you, Mr. Moorhead, for having me back, and certainly thank you, Ms. Way, for keeping me straight with getting you everything that you needed. I have served all my life, my professional career, and continue to serve, and certainly I appreciate the opportunity to present to you what we're doing here in Haywood County, what we're gonna be doing. We previously worked on a project with Haywood County, and we're looking to renew the imagery. So these screenshots that I took from the first slide were actually taken from your previous imagery capture. So a little bit about Eagle View, the company I work for, we capture aerial imagery, we do high-resolution imagery throughout the country, we captured about 98% of the US population. We have about 130 planes that stay in the air full-time, and we capture aerial imagery mainly for city and county governments. In the Carolinas, which is where my territory is, you can see the counties that we've captured in the past, and we were capturing quite a lot of imagery around you all as we speak. My afternoon meeting is with the Eastern Band of Cherokee Indians, and they're gonna refresh their imagery as well. So a little bit about pictometry, you may hear a few new terms, and certainly feel free to ask any questions along the way. But pictometry imagery is basically imagery captured from aircraft, and it provides you with all five directions. So there's one straight down, and then there's four in 45-degree angles. So we call that oblique imagery. Being in the military, and thank you all again, as I walked up, I really appreciate you all honoring veterans and see all the memorials around, so thank you for that. I was in the Navy, and as we would march, our company commander would tell us, "Right oblique march," and that would tell us to march at a 45-degree angle. And it's the same with aerial imagery. We have five cameras on the plane, one shoots straight down, and the other four cameras shoot in all four cardinal directions. So you can see on the right, the image of the plane. And the advantage of this is, you might have seen ortho imagery, where you look straight down and see imagery from the top, but you can't really determine a lot of physical characteristics about buildings around the county by looking straight down. So for example, that building in the center there, and I picked this image for a reason, you can't see any shadowing, so you can't quite tell how tall it is. But when you look at it from an oblique view, it jumps out at you, it gives you a more realistic perspective of what you're looking at on the ground, especially when you're using this imagery in the office and you're trying to save trips out into the field. And think about those 911 dispatchers that could have this imagery at their terminals when they're taking calls. So it's not just a pretty picture, you can actually measure everything on this imagery. You can measure heights, you can measure areas, distances, football fields. So here's a, just a perspective on oblique imagery. So I've shown this picture to quite a lot of audiences, and I've asked them to tell me what they're looking at. And I won't do that today, but I've gotten answers from a doorknob, to a Petri dish, to a glass. So when they say glass, I say, okay, great, what kind of glass? And with a very low level of certainty, they don't really know. But when I show them this, they know what it is. It's spot-on. Of course, I make the joke that the wine glass is empty and get a little chuckle, but you can certainly relate this to the real world, where when you're looking at a building and you ask people, "What is this, what kind of building is this?", I get answers from single-family, to a church, to some type of historical landmark. So when they say church, I say, "How do you know it's a church? Well, we can kinda see the steeple there, and it looks like there's a rear parking lot." So when they say parking lot, I say, "Gotcha, that's not a parking lot, that's a, some kind of event center in the back of that church." So if there's a 911 call, and they're in the event center, it'd be really nice to have that information. But also remember, you get all four sides of that, so I can actually be a dispatcher and tell the first responder that there's a rear entrance in the back of that little center behind the church. So again, standard ortho, you get four different facing sides of each building throughout the entire county. Internally, for the county, there's unlimited use of this technology through every department, and every department has access to this technology. Public safety, I've mentioned a few times, 911, emergency management. For property appraisal, we have quite a lot of counties using it for their reassessments, where they can do desktop review and use it to find new properties that may or may not have been permitted, or may or may not be in the assessment database. For public safety, certainly get it into the CAD system, Sheriff's Department, fire Public works, there's quite a big effort for public works to keep data up-to-date, especially when you're looking at like impervious surfaces, where water runoff off a property is a lot higher, because there's impervious surface on that, on that property. And I always take care of my, I hang my hat on GIS, so I always make sure that we are integrated in with the GIS. And then other departments for, I won't read through each of these, but you can certainly see there's a wide use of this aerial imagery and the oblique imagery. For accessing this, we have a cloud, we capture the imagery, and we provide access to the county through web-based, through mobile technology. We have a download, downloadable app for your phone and for your iPad to be able to use this imagery out in the field. We also tie in with all the county's systems, from computer-aided mass appraisal, I mentioned GIS, computer-aided dispatch, and you can also have a public access interface where you can provide this type of information out to the public. So these are just some quick examples of integration in with a CAMA system, where you've got all of your property characteristics, you've got your sketch, you've got your front-facing photo, and you've got your oblique imagery. For integration in CAD, just having another view for the dispatcher to be able to provide more detailed information out to the responding vehicle, responding person. In with GIS and public access, I just grabbed a screenshot from Surrey County, where they have a public viewer, where you can go in and type an address or a parcel number, and you can get all the property information and zoom to that location. Couple of other quick things, we also do change detection, so we can take imagery A and imagery B, and compare it to each other, and show the county where physical change has occurred. So you can see in that graphic there, that house on the right has changed and added some additional improvements. So we do things like detecting new structures, detecting structures that are no longer there, structures that have been improved, sometimes they don't get permitted, but you can pick that up real easily on this imagery. And you also get a GIS layer that shows you everywhere around the county where there's a change. And then the staff can look at this map and figure out what this change is. Also, being able to track that change into dollars, where we recently did a change finder project for Guilford County, and they discovered about $50 million of value that was not in their system, that turned into $344,000 of revenue each year, and they recouped their investment in 1.3 years. And then the other thing we do is sketch check, taking all the property sketches from the assessor's office, from the tax office, and putting those on top of the imagery and showing where those sketches don't match. And that also results in quite a lot of undiscovered revenue. Disaster response, one of the cool things about aerial imagery in my company is, after we fly and capture imagery, if there's a disaster, some type of natural disaster, or some terrorist activity, we come back and fly the imagery at no cost. And we usually do that within a day or two after the event, so you can have immediate disaster response damage assessment. Also with this, it's fully supported and fully trained. We come in and we train employees on how to use this system. We have full support that's all included. Then we have two employees that live in North Carolina that work with every county in the state. And with that, I'll be glad to take any questions. Sorry to throw a bunch at you in a 10-minute span, but certainly it's exciting technology, and it does have quite a lot of use.
Any comments? Go ahead, Kurt.
I thought the, I thought we had a flyover prior to, I mean, or after 2007. Is that the last flyover that we had? 2015?
We tried to do it every four years, I think. Stephanie?
Chief Becker.
Chief Becker, okay.
I thought it said somewhere in here, the last one was 2007, that's why I was a little...
For the oblique imagery, it was 2007. The aerial photography is flown every four years, that's provided by the 911 Board.
Okay.
We try not to fly the same time the state does, so that way...
We try not to fly the same time the state does, so that way there's alternate, alternate imagery, rotating imagery.
And this will be on the GIS? Stephanie? Okay. Is that a different layer or...?
Yes, sir. It's a, so you'll be able to have access to all the other imagery layers and this will be a new layer that would be added as well.
Okay. I would, I could see how it would save staff time when they're doing revale and stuff like that and then I know, I know just the information we have on our GIS side, it's a surveyor, I use that and, you know, in the old days, you just kind of went out and kind of found your way around and now you can kind of, you know what you're getting into before you get there and so you're more prepared and I would think this would be, you know, like you were saying, be more prepared for EMS and...
Yes, sir. I've had comments where being able just to see the daytime imagery at night, because there's a lot of responding vehicles at night and they can see the daytime imagery or I had a person that said that someone called that the house across the street was being broken into and it's a blue house, so being able to pull up the oblique imagery, you can certainly see the colors of the houses. It was pretty refreshing. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions? Dazzling. Yeah. How will you use it, Stephanie? I mean, like in land records, for instance?
It's very useful in land records when we have a taxpayer that calls and they're wanting to see, you know, I need the third house down from the intersection that has the green roof, green shutters, you know, it helps us to be able to identify and help them better.
Yeah, and you'll know what they're talking about and stuff.
Exactly.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Have a great day. Thank you.
You too.
Thank you.
Okay, our next order of business is a discussion adjustment to the agenda. I don't have any, does anyone else? Okay. The next order of business will be the consent agenda and I'll read through these and if you have any questions, when I get to the end, we'll go back. The first, the first item of the consent agenda is the request of approval of the 2016, 2019 regular meeting minutes as well as the September 16th, 2019 special meeting minutes. The next order is, number two, is the request approval of budget amendments and we have several of these. The first is from the General Fund and Health and Human Services, Maple Leaf Adult Respite for $10,200 and Mills on Wheels, $20,000. These are grants from United Way for support of these county programs for qualified clients. The next is from the General Fund, Public Safety, through the Sheriff's Office to appropriate the $1,005 received in donations to cover some of the costs for the sheriff's summer camp that was held this summer. That's under attachment five. The next is from the General Fund, Facility Service, $6,180 to appropriate the amount contributed by the Haywood County Library Foundation that will be used to build a shed for the outdoor learning center at the Canton Library and that's attachment number six. Next is from the General Fund under HHSA Health, $12,558 to appropriate the net cost settlement amount from the 2017 Medicaid cost report from the Health Department that has been refunded to the county this year to be used in the public health department programs that generate Medicaid revenues. That's attachment seven. Next is from the General Fund and Health and Human Services, Health, the $35,546 to appropriate the net cost settlement amount from the 2018 Medicaid cost report from the Health Department that has been refunded to the county this year to be used in the public health department programs that generate Medicaid revenues. That's under attachment eight. Next is the Capital Project Fund, the Solid Waste Management, Francis Farm Landfield Corrective Action Plan, $30,000 transfer from the Special Revenue Solid Waste Fund to cover permitting and additional fees for the cap. All right, then the third item is to request approval of a contract with Johnson Controls for Security Updates in the Detention Center in the amount of $25,204 to be paid from budgeted funds and that's under attachment 10. Next is to request approval of memorandum of agreement between Haywood County Sheriff's Office and the towns of Wayneville, Maggie Valley, Canton and Clyde, addressing statutory requirements surrounding involuntary commitment order transportation paid with budgeted funds under attachment 11. And the last item is to request approval for the county manager to execute the contract for the countywide UHF, VHF purchase of equipment to upgrade the county's public information safety emerg, the county's safety emergency services radio communication system currently in use with Motorola Solutions Incorporated for increased effectiveness and safety for the radio communications and mobile interoperability equipment for the Sheriff's Office, 911 Communication Center in the amount of $691,134 to be paid for budgeted funds and resolution authorizing the purchase per exception in North Carolina General Statute 149-129E as presented at the September 16th, 2019 meeting and that's under attachment 12. Okay, does anyone have any questions or comments on the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, only the item five there, I had a constituent that had contacted me this past week and said that they were a little upset that we were spending that much money and it wasn't affecting their area. And I had told them this is only one phase of this project and that this was an immediate need that could be fixed quickly. So, we do have another phase that will be coming, it's just a little more time-consuming. So, just a little FYI.
Okay. That way we get, kind of get, get going down the road. It's pretty complicated. I didn't realize, I mean, I'm not into the communications in the county, I didn't realize that how complicated it was, to be honest with you. So, I think this will really help us get, get down the road a little bit. Does anybody have any other questions or comments? In hearing that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Totally.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, you want to oppose? Okay, that's unanimous. Okay, we'll move on to our next order of business, which is our regular agenda. And the first item is the discussion of the Aetna Health Insurance and Haywood Regional Wellness Proposals and Authorization for County Manager to execute the necessary documents to enter into contracts. And we have our county manager, Bryant Moorehead, to speak about that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We spent a great deal of time in the budget process talking about health insurance and since then, we had budget amendments brought to you guys to fix shortage during FY19, so talking about health insurance is nothing new to you. I'll show you some prior data. You can see the blue line represents budget and red line represents actuals. I'll point to FY19. We budgeted $7 million and right now it looks like we spent about $9.3 million on health insurance. That's unaudited, so that number may change once the auditor's here and we finish our books. But you can see, next year or for current year, we have about $10.1 million budgeted for health costs. Quite honestly, that number is, is large and we've tried to, an approach to fix that. You can see, over the last few years, we've had fluctuations. We were at almost 8% increase over the prior year in 16. We had a decrease in 17, another increase in 18 and 19 was the large increase. We have lots of high claims, the costs are increasing and so we have to tackle it. And for current year, we budgeted an increase of 7.7% increase and I think making these changes we're about to talk will keep us within budget and hopefully slow that cost because nobody can handle a 37% increase from one year to the next. So, what we've done is we worked with Mark Browder from Mark III. We recently switched our stop-loss provider, I think we did that at the June, July or August meeting. That saved us some money by reducing our exposure. We did an RFP to see who could be our health plan carrier. We requested quotes from Aetna, Blue Cross, Cigna, Crescent, MedCost, prescription benefits and United. And we received quotes from all of those providers. We decided to interview the top three and the incumbent provider. We had an interview panel of Mark Browder and Tracy McCarty, his assistant, Julie, Candy, Kathy McClure, Lori, Crystal from HR and myself. And when, through the interview process, we all agreed that Aetna and Cigna were the two best solutions for Haywood County and that includes not just financial considerations, but overall care for our employees and retirees. What we've decided is to recommend Aetna to you all. What the highlights are, there's no changes to the copay or premiums. We're really just changing the administrator. This does not impact dental, ah, or your elective benefits, the things that you may have as far as supplemental cancer or unemployment or compensation insurance. Aetna for the network coverage in Haywood and Buncombe County is at 99%. So, we think that there's going to be limited disruption for employees. About 8% of our total spend last year will be disrupted, but when you dig down into it, it's not providers, it's a lot of the clinical work that Aetna switches, who they send for lab results and things like that. Very few doctors that will be impacted for the switch to Aetna. They have a very stable relationship with Duke, LifePoint and HCA and this is really important, that the partnership with Aetna is long-term and that we don't expect there to be contract negotiations between HCA, DLP or Aetna for a long time and that's important because we don't want people out of network. I will say that there will be some disruption on the pharmacy, switching tiers, there always is. And as we've talked to Mark and Tracy about that, this is the one that will probably give us the most headaches for the first few months is that some drugs that were in one tier will be in a different one. So, we'll experience that, but we'll get through. It can't be all roses, so there's going to be some pain there. Also, during the budget process, we talked about expanding our own wellness or employee wellness clinic. Well, going with Aetna, we'll have access to the CVS Minute Clinics. They have about 1,100 nationwide. Our employees will be able to go to that. So, if our employee wellness clinic is closed, we're making that an option available at no cost to employees or retirees that we get to expand the wellness clinic without hiring anyone as part of the contract fee with Aetna. They also are providing, when I say incentives, they're giving us cash for implementation, wellness and waiving administrative fee for two and a half months. And we, most importantly, we get access to the, to the discounts that Aetna has negotiated that, that will save us money on our claims. Going forward, if you approve this agenda item, I'll execute the contracts. Aetna's already been talking to HR about some dates. If the contract's approved, when they will be on-site to do open enrollment and make sure that they educate our employees about the change, this is a big shift. It affects a lot of insured lives. We need to get it right and I think Aetna has committed to a team of between three and five to have on-site to help us through it, so it doesn't all lay on, on our HR department. And the changeover will be effective on January 1st. So, here it is, October 7th, so we have to move quickly on this. I'll be glad to answer any questions on, on Aetna or the process that you may have because it's a big consideration.
Questions? No? Okay. I like the part that, that hopefully, you know, other than the medical prescriptions, everything should pretty much stay the same with, I think you said 99%, so that's good.
That was one of the things that we looked at right off the bat was disruption. We didn't want a huge shakeup where you didn't have access to your doctors and, and all of the, Aetna, Cigna and Blue Cross all provided that. Aetna and Cigna were really close here, so it made us lean that direction.
What kind of disruption are we talking about in the prescription?
All of them. Just the blood pressure, diabetes medication, just about everything that you have will be covered under this. Instead of, our card reads Pharmavale now, it will be in the Aetna Pharmacy Network.
But you said that that would be the most disrupted area. I mean, just give an example of what the employees are looking at there.
Well, is Mark here? I guess we have different tiers as far as the cost of medication. Some would be a premium, some would be less, that there will be some movement front from one tier to the next. And when I say disruption, it's all not going to be negative. Some drugs that you may have had in a tier one or a premium tier would be in a more affordable tier. We haven't sorted all through that with the pharmacy and I'm just trying to identify this, if there is a sticky wicket, this will be the one that we have to get through.
Okay. One thing too, is we'll have free access to the CVS Minute Clinics and that's, you know, we talked about our wellness clinic expanding hours and we won't have to do that because the Minute Clinic is, I guess they operate seven days a week.
They have expanded hours, much more expanded than our clinic. And it's nationwide, if you're on vacation and, you know, you can, you can find that with their app, you can find out the closest one and the wait time. Do want to mention that even though if you do go to the Minute Clinic, you don't have to get prescriptions filled at CVS, you can take them to your regular pharmacy. It's not impacting that.
And then also, I don't know if that was in here, but don't your insurance card, you can have an app for that instead of having to get your card out, it's too dark to make a copy?
It was pretty interesting, the, the, the technology that Aetna brings to the table as far as being able to look up your prescriptions and the costs, but also to be able to download of, of an insurance card. Let's say you left it at home or lost it, it's a digital insurance card. And one of the, one of the reps said that she had it and when her mother babysits, she can download the card so she doesn't have to get her a copy of the card to take the kid to the doctor. So, you know, makes it a little more modern.
You know, just one comment on this process. I've talked to Bryant several times about this and it was good to see competition. You know, you had several plan administrators come to the table and bid on this contract. So, for everybody who's involved with that, from what I hear, you know, potential savings is quite substantial, but you know, we don't, we won't know until we get further down the road. But I do like competition and bidding that out with several bidders, it's always a good thing. So, thank you for all the work you put in on that.
Thanks. If no other questions about the, the health plan, I'm going to ask Rod to come up and speak about the wellness component of this for our employees.
Thank you. Have they received this yet, do you know? If not, will you hand that?
I won't be talking about this whole, the whole document that you're receiving now because I would be here for a long time. I will make a comment regarding when you were talking about the drug changes, just off of experience where you would see like Aetna or like, let's say you're taking a beta blocker for your blood pressure and you're taking a generic brand, well, you would be in a different tier, but if, let's say there was a new drug that had come out to maybe improve cardiac output or whatever, that didn't have a generic, what you see insurance companies charging you a higher tier. So, if you're on a higher tier drug now, because maybe you've got diabetes, what they'll try to do is shift you to a generic, but if you look at the pharmacology side of it, it's really the same mix-up. It's just sometimes, I mean, I'm on blood pressure medicine, when I was on Atacan for a long time and our insurance company moved me to another one and I was like, oh my gosh, this is not going to work the same. Even being a nurse, I realized quickly that it's the same pharmacological background, so it's really just getting people to sometimes switch from a generic, I mean, from a premier to a generic to keep their prices the same. So, that's what you'll see sometimes when you switch, they'll try to reduce cost on that side. So, that's not what I was talking about, but I thought I, just dealing with this enough, I would be realistic for the employees. So, the wellness program, you know, Haywood Regional, thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners for having me. I met with the county manager quite a few times and what talked was, how could we drive better outcomes for the employees and their families? You have over 500... You have over 500, I believe, or close to 480 employees and their family members. And the goal, what we were trying to do is how could we utilize our resources to kind of drive wellness and improve the life of your employees? Let me see, okay. I only have three slides here and a little bit to talk about it. What are we trying to drive? You know, our health assessment, but the big driver is an annual labs so that you can kind of know exactly as an employee where you fall, whether you have hypertension, whether you have hyperlipidemia, cholesterol that's growing and across the board from your weight gain. You know, you see companies sometimes start to measure this because it's a preventative measure. If you're early onset diabetes, people who actually start treating that at an early stage reduce costs long-term because of the damage that is done. Same way with hypertension, same thing with weight loss. So our goal is to give a tool or give an opportunity where the employees can utilize our urgent cares or we're going to go on site to where they work, do this assessment. So then there'll be information that, on the next slide I'll talk about that, our Nurse Navigator can drive. You'll also see that there will be a lot of education that we will offer throughout the year and we'll base that education off of what's driving the workforce illnesses or what their rate of potential complications are in the future. I think the biggest driver of this and probably the biggest expense of this is the Nurse Navigator. What you will find is an employed Nurse Navigator, that'll be employed for us, but there'll be a full-time FT for you, which means you can utilize them to the fullest ability. And what we realize is that, in the same way with our cancer program and we have Nurse Navigators, you want employees or you want the patient to have someone to walk them through the process. And in this case, a Nurse Navigator, if you had an employee that, let's say, had hypertension, they would have that, they would call the employee and say, you know, we're going to get you set up with a doctor's appointment. And that is whether they, their doctor is at HCA, whether it's a mission or wherever or LifePoint, it's irrelevant. The point is to get them connected, to get them going to see the doctor. They will do follow-up to make sure, you know, Ms. Jones, you haven't been, you know, hypertension, you need to get it checked or your cholesterol's too high. That navigator's not only going to drive accountability awareness, but do education and kind of steer the employees and their families to better outcomes. This is a big driver. If you look at the costs associated downstream to not treating individual disease processes, the costs go up. So the goal is to do that, but also to create a wellness approach where we want to go. So as you see, we're going to have dietitians, personal trainers, and that's tied to our fitness center. You know, we were looking at how we could tie the employees where, benefit them to go into the fitness center, to utilize the fitness center, to have a specialized trainer to help them because everyone's different and how they want to attack weight loss or nutritional. So using all the access points that we have within the organization to kind of drive a better wellness for employees. The goal is to reduce, you know, cost, but in the end, it's also to drive a healthier work environment. One of the big important pieces that we were going to have is the reporting system. How are we going to know whether this is working? Well, the good thing about it is we will have, we will be able to track the data. Of course, it'll be confidentially out of HIPAA, but we'll be able to present back how many people, what's your high risk? How many people have high cholesterol? How many have hypertension or therefore down the diagnostics or disease process so that you can see where you want to target your education, where you want to spend your, where you want to spend additional resources. Also, we'll be able to track the fitness center. How many people are coming into the fitness center utilizing it so that you can see whether or not this product is successful? Is it driving change? You know, from our end, this is a win for making communities healthier to try to drive our mission. And I feel like that we've put a lot of time and effort. I had some more in-depth book that you will see that kind of goes over it, but we're pretty excited about joining and helping the county with this. What kind of questions do you have for me? All right. And that's easy.
Well, I'll just say the dietitian, I know my wife, I think that where she works, they started doing the dietitian. She really appreciated, I mean, she's with another outfit, but you know, she, it really made a difference in the way she looked at things.
Well, you know, our goal too is to put things online where people, you know, part of your assessment was your employees wanted to be able to not, they're always in a hurry or they're always busy. How can they get this education? So we'll do blogs where our dietitian, you can call, you know, go online and talk to the dietitian or we can actually, you know, videotape certain stuff so that we can kind of get it. Because I mean, a lot of it is driving behavior. We do it with our own employees. How can you reduce the cost long-term associated to, you know, unfortunately, our genetics are bad behaviors. And, you know, standing in front of me, I'm 270 pounds and 6'3", I have a lot of behaviors that need to be improved, but it is what it is sometimes.
Rob, y'all are doing this now, I understand, is that right?
Yes, sir. Well, we've done this within our company. We do support models where we go out to like some of the banks, we've done some with fitting out at Cherokee, we've done with the plant, we've done. But this is kind of a, we're trying to grow this program long-term so that we can offer it, really expand it. Because this navigator, having someone to manage your care, you're seeing it across the continuum of care, how if you have somebody that's kind of watching a population, pushing them through, because it's, you know, they can the same way saying, you know, your cholesterol's really high, it's very dangerous, this could cause stroke, please, let's make sure you get to that appointment. And then afterwards, you know, they're not going to tell you all the patient's history, but it'll give that extra push that you need to kind of drive that behavior and get them to where you want them to be. So yes, sir.
I appreciate the hospital offering this and working with us on this wellness program. I mean, obviously keeping costs down as far as insurance costs, it helps when people take care of themselves and they're healthy. And that's one of the main reasons that we have people visiting the hospital and incurring medical costs and long-term medical costs is because they're just not taking care of themselves. So if we can train people to do that and be aware of it, I think it'd be beneficial and appreciate the hospital's assistance.
And the goal for us too is to be able to present data to show you outcomes. It doesn't do as, you know, I think that's one thing we'll be able to do is say, is this successful? I mean, I'm a taxpayer as well. You want to know that your dollars are going to drive down to actually save you money and make a healthier environment. So I think the data that you guys will get to see will show not only that it's being successful, but that you're reducing costs long-term.
Right, I know you're right.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Rod.
Thank you.
Okay, the next order of business for our regular agenda is item number two, is to request approval of application to the Public School Building Capital Fund. This is Tuscola High School, which will be $30,132.34 for replacing, for replacement of intercom systems from the state capital.
Kevin, you need to make a motion for Bryant to execute that.
You need a motion for that?
I need a motion on the last one to approve, well, I move to approve that the county entering into contract of Aetna Health Insurance and Haywood Regional Wellness for the proposals presented by the county manager, Bryant Moorehead.
Okay. Second, are you in the discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Sorry about that. Well, as I was saying, you've got Trevor Putnam in here. It's the Tuscola High School, it's the replacement of intercom systems from the state capital building fund and $10,044 from the county as a 25% match for a total of $40,176.34 for the Tuscola project. We have Julie.
What I have, hear me?
Yeah.
What I have are two applications for the public school building project. And we've done these in the past. The ADM funding has stopped. We're not getting any more contributions. We haven't gotten contributions probably for 10 years or more. But there's a balance in that account that's about $75,000 and the schools are trying to use that money to do the projects versus some others. It does require accounting match that we're using the sales tax revenue to cover. So Dr. Putnam is here to tell you about the projects and what kind of funding is going to be used for those.
And let me just read the other one. It's, the other one's basically a high school, $45,000 for replacement of intercom systems. And it'll be from the state capital building fund and $15,000 from the county is a 25% match for a total of $60,000 for the Pisga project. So I just want to point out that Tuscola is less than Pisga here by like 20 grand. So maybe you can explain that, Trevor.
All right. Good morning Commissioners and Mr. Chairman. Thank you for this opportunity. We, they do show less amounts. This will not be enough money to fund the projects fully. Have quotes for $53,950 for both schools. They are, they do cost the same amount. To dissolve this first ADM line item, that, these are the totals used and the match from the county. As Ms. Davis pointed out, ADM money no longer is received by us. So that will deplete that line item. And in a subsequent meeting, I'll be coming back to you asking for state sales tax money to be applied or requesting sales tax money to be applied additionally to this project. As you can tell, it's going to be over the amount requested here in these ADM funds, but we wanted to resolve that line item first and then come back and ask for the additional money from sales tax to cover completion of the project as well as the addition of Waynesville Middle School. We're basically going after our three largest intercom systems, which are the most expensive. These intercoms, I won't get into a lot of the safety features, but they greatly improve safety at those three schools. They have intruders in mind and the need and in the event, should we ever need them, they have a variety of safety features. But because this is a public meeting, I'm not going to disclose what those are because it might give someone an opportunity to circumvent those. So, but they are being installed. The current systems are Simplex Systems. They were installed in 1999, so they're 20 years old. We've already had two glitches where the system either powered up and set off an alarm on its own at Pisga or it powered down and wouldn't work at all. And in this day and age, we really cannot afford to be without communication within our school building. And we really cannot afford to have a false alarm going off when we, you know, we're training and readying kids to listen to those alarms and respond appropriately. We certainly don't want any level of apathy toward those alarms. So again, $53,950 is the amount for each of those schools, bringing that total to So we're going to need the additional funds from state sales tax in a subsequent meeting.
If you approve this application, once it gets sent to Raleigh for DPI, they will need to approve it. And when they approve it, I'll bring back a budget amendment. And with that budget amendment, we'll pull in the ADM funds and then make the request for the additional sales tax funds, which are now in fund balance. So it'll be in appropriation from fund balance at that point.
Okay, so we need to approve the application. Is that, so the motion should be, I'll entertain a motion to request the approval of the applications to the Public School Building Capital Fund, right?
So moved.
Second. Is there any other discussion?
That takes care of both of them, right?
Right, yeah, for both of those. Is that okay, Candy? Okay.
And the school boards approved this already.
Yes, that's how it starts. It starts with them and then, as I understand it, then to you.
Mr. Putnam, I assume that school boards are elected, as you guys have, but the customer service after it's installed, I guess, is it high rated?
I'm sorry?
Once intercom system's put in and in place, I guess from a customer service standpoint, as far as servicing or anything that could pop up, have you checked into that?
We actually put these out for bid. We really only had two vendors that could provide, this specific system's called the Carehawk system. We only had two vendors that could provide that and we went with Haynes Technology, who has installed most of, if not all, of our IT equipment within our buildings. And the service from them throughout time has been very reputable.
So we got a motion in a second. So any other discussions? Are all those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay, you want to post? Okay, pass.
Thank you. And I promise to level it up so it's Pisga and Tuscola with the same amount.
Pisga gets all the money.
They get all the wins too.
That's about right. Okay, the third item after Brandon roped that in is to request approval of a $25 non-resident annual library card fee for the Haywood County Public Library. And we have our library director, Kathy Wassler, here this morning. This is under attachment 16.
Good morning.
Hey, Kathy.
The library board and I have been having this discussion for several months now to implement a non-resident fee. The purpose for this is to bring in additional revenue to the county and hopefully eventually to the library budget to pay for not only materials, print materials, but also a lot of digital services that we continually are adding for our, not only our residents, but other residents as well. Several months ago, I sent out a request to North Carolina library directors to ask them whether or not they're charging a non-resident fee. Of the 30 responses that I received from municipal libraries, regional libraries and county library systems, about two-thirds charge a non-resident fee, anywhere from $5 a year up to $60 per year. And most of them seem to be very, there's no real justification for what they charge. But Southern Pines specifically charges what residents pay annually per capita through taxes. And theirs was actually the highest, it's $60 per year. So I looked at the majority of our funding, which of course is local from Haywood County. Our budget for fiscal year 18 was 1.5 million and per resident numbers, that comes out to $24.29 per resident, which is spent for library services. For fiscal year 19, that went up to $24.96. So I expect that to continue to increase as our budget increases. So that's how we came up with the $25 number.
Kirk, you're on that board.
Yeah, this, the board has discussed this issue probably over the last at least six months in coming up with this annual fee. And basically it's just an issue of fairness. All the folks that pay property taxes in Haywood County, they want, they can get a free library card. So if, even if they live in Florida, if they own a property here, they pay taxes, they can, they can. This is talking about people who live in other counties who utilize our library and don't really participate in the economy of Haywood County. And we just felt it was only fair that they pay their fair share.
And we are, we are giving a little bit of grace to people who work in the county, to students, to teachers who may live in Buncombe but come into Haywood. We want them to also use our county library. So we would give them, we would issue them free library cards. Of local counties, Transylvania, Henderson and Buncombe all charge $20 per year for non-residents. Jackson, Swain and Macon charge 15 and Madison charges 10.
You have a question?
No, she just answered it. I've seen where the employees, if you're employed in Haywood County, even though you may live outside, you won't have to do this, correct?
Right.
Good. Any other questions for Kathy? Hearing that, I'll entertain a motion to request approval of a $25 non-resident annual library card fee for the Haywood County Public Library.
So moved.
Or second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor designate by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay, you want to post? That's unanimous. Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you.
And the next item of business, number four, is to request approval, request approval of requests from the town of Maggie Valley for the county to repay the amounts paid per the 2009 agreement due to a change of usage for the Jonathan Creek property originally purposed for recreational purposes. And we have our finance director, Julie Davis.
I have an email from Nathan Clark, who is
I have an email from Nathan Clark, who is the town manager for Maggie Valley. It says, please allow this email to serve as the town of Maggie Valley's official request to have our Jonathan Creek Park financial investment refunded to the town of Maggie Valley. As the attached agreement points out, our financial investment in the property acquisition was contingent on it being used for recreation purposes, and the, um, the agreement between the, the town of Maggie Valley and Haywood County should be in your packet, and, um, the town has paid us over the years a total of $105,965. And they're requesting it be returned because from their, from their viewpoint, the agreement was that they would pay, I think it was about 10% of our annual debt service as long as the property was used for recreation.
And Brandon and I met with, and Bryant, Bryant met with the mayor, and the mayor, Sarah Lynn Price and Nathan Clark, uh, I guess it's been a few months ago, after a meeting, so. Has anybody had any comments or discussion? What, what happened was, well, it's just as Julie said, Maggie Valley had a 10%, they had agreed to do the recreation, and since we probably aren't going to do that now, they would like their money returned per our agreement, so, and tied with this, the next item is a, is, is the budget amendment for that, so. We're just kind of giving them back, we're just keeping our end of the bargain, if you will. Okay. So I'll, I'll request, I will entertain a motion that we, uh, approve the request from Maggie Valley to, for the county to repay the amounts per the 2009 agreement due to a change of usage for the Jonathan Creek property originally proposed for recreation purposes.
So moved.
Is there a second? Okay, any other discussion? Okay, here and now, I'll entertain, I mean, here and now, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, anyone opposed? Okay, and then number five is to request approval of budget amendment from the general fund for economic development, $105,965 appropriation of fund balance for the amount requested from the town of Maggie Valley.
And, um, what I've done with this budget amendment is to put the $105,965 in our budget since we had not budgeted previously in order to pay it back, and, um, we're putting it under the economic development function because that's what we're doing with Jonathan Creek Park.
Okay, and I'll entertain a motion for the budget amendment from the general fund economic development, $105,965 to be appropriated from the fund balance for the amount requested from the town of Maggie Valley.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? Yeah, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that's unanimous.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Julie. Okay, item number six of the regular agenda is to request approval of the 2020 personal property depreciation schedules, and we have our tax assessor, Julie Hickman, this morning. This is under attachment 18.
Good morning. I'm requesting approval of the 2020 personal property depreciation schedules. There were no changes made from last year's schedules, and this will include, um, applying depreciation to mobile homes not appraised as real, boats, motors, camping trailers, um, and unregistered motor vehicles.
Is anyone having questions for Judy? And there's no change, so.
No.
Okay. Okay, here and now, and here and no one, uh, I'll entertain a motion to request the approval of the 2020 personal property depreciation schedules.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor signal aye by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, anyone opposed? Okay, that's unanimous, thank you, Judy. Okay, uh, item number seven, and the final item of our regular agenda is to request approval of the amended Tourism Development Authority occupancy tax waiver resolution. And Bryant, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Currently, the TDA has the authority to waive late penalties of up to $250. This, uh, really amends that resolution to the $1,000 threshold, uh, that's the only change. Do you want me to, uh, to read the entire resolution?
Uh, okay.
Doesn't matter, sure. Whereas the Haywood County Tourism Development Authority administers a program which involves the expenditure of revenues collected by the county through the room occupancy tax, and whereas the administration of the program involves the requirement that covered businesses submit period reports which form the basis of, for the tax obligation, and whereas the filing of such reports and payments of taxes based on a statutory time schedule, and the failure to report and pay in accordance with that schedule results in the imposition of late penalties, and whereas the collection of such penalties is costly and sometimes involves attorney's fees, and whereas the TDA desires to be cost-effective in its collection efforts, and whereas amounts due to, due to the county under the occupancy tax program have in the past been forgiven or deadlines extended by the Board of County Commissioners upon the showing of good and reasonable cause for the failure to pay or file in accordance with the statutes, statutes, and whereas the TDA has passed a resolution requesting approval of a program to forgive certain penalties as not being cost-effective to engage in collection efforts. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Haywood County Board of Commissioners support and approve that the TDA shall have the authority to waive a late penalty up to the amount of $1,000 upon the showing of good and reasonable cause by the taxpayer. Number two, the TDA shall have the authority to write off from its books any old penalties up to the amount of $1,000. And three, the actions authorized by this resolution may be taken without approval in the future from the Haywood County Board of Commissioners, adopted the 7th day of October 2019.
Okay, and then Lynn had it, just wanted to make sure Lynn Collins that we, uh, in other words, if it's less than a thousand dollars, then their board handles that, and they don't appeal to us unless it's over a thousand dollars.
That's, that's my understanding.
Does that, I don't know that that changes the right to appeal, though. It sounds like to me it just has, it, it raises the authority by which the Haywood, the, the authority, the Tourism Development Authority has the right to waive that penalty, it moves it up from 200 to 1,000 so they can look at anything under 1,000, but I don't know if it changes the right to appeal. If they don't, if they don't agree with the ruling of the TDA board, does that, I mean, just because it's under 1,000, they can still appeal, it looks like to me. It's just giving the, the Tourism Development Authority a higher threshold to waive those penalties instead of before, they could only waive under 200, and it had to come to us. Now it's got to be, now they can waive up to 1,000 and it has to come to us, but if they disagree with it, they can, they still appeal to us. Is that correct?
I, I think it only changes the threshold.
Right.
But we can, we can amend that.
No, I'm good, I, I'm fine with that, I didn't want to mess up people's due process, and I don't think this does.
Okay, good, thanks, Kirk. Okay. Is there any other questions or comments? Okay, I'll entertain a motion that we approve the amended Tourism Development Authority occupancy tax waiver resolution.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, anyone opposed? Okay, that's unanimous. Okay, the next item of business is appointments, and the first one is to request approval of a reappointment of David Clement to the jury commission for Haywood County, and Kirk, you had that.
Uh, Rob, every, every so many years, there's a, a reappointment by the Board of County Commissioners as to one of the persons, um, that serves on the jury commission, I think there are three people that go through the jury list, and they just review the jury list to determine if some, if people are too old, if they deceased, if they're, if they no longer live here, to come up with the appropriate jury pool or people, persons to draw names to be, to serve on the jury. So it's, it's not where they can pick and choose and say, you don't have to serve on the jury or not, it's just based on age, based on residency and availability. And so David Clement has been serving on that board for quite some time now, and the, um, the motion's just to reappoint David, and he, we have spoken to him and he's agreed to continue to serve.
Okay. Is there any other discussion? Okay, is there a, can I, can I have a, I'll entertain a motion to approve the reappointment of David Clement to the jury commission for Haywood County.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. Anyone opposed? Okay. Okay, number two is to request approval of reappointments of Marie Simmers and Kathy Johnson to the Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee for Long-Term Care. Right?
Mr. Chairman, we have an email from Larry Reeves, who services our alums budman to this committee, and he said that both of those members, uh, should be reappointed, they're wonderful advocates for the residents, and he recommends their reappointment.
Okay. Okay, I'll entertain a motion that we request the approval of the reappointments of Marie Simmers and Kathy Johnson to the Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee for Long-Term Care.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any, all those in favor signal aye by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, and I want to thank those two ladies for doing that, for serving on that board. And third item of appointments is to request approval of reappointment of Nita Kirkpatrick to the Adult Care Homes Community Advisory Committee for Long-Term Care. Right?
Thank you. We also have an email from Mr. Reeves, uh, from Ms. Kirkpatrick's reappointment, that she is a wonderful advocate and would like to see her put back on that, uh, committee for three-year term.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion that we request approval of reappointment of Nina Kirkpatrick to the Adult Care Homes Community Advisory Committee for Long-Term Care.
So moved.
Is there a second? Okay, everybody's asleep today.
I'm trying not to make all of them, I did.
Okay, is there any other discussion? And I, and I want to say I appreciate Nita, Kirk and Patrick with their time to do that. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that's unanimous. The fourth item is, uh, the request approval of reappointments of Eddie Lael and Robert Smart to the Clyde Zoning Board of Adjustments. Right, go ahead.
We have an email from, uh, Ms. Garland, Town of Clyde, that the board, uh, Clyde Board actually voted in September, um, for Mr. Lael and Mr. Smart to be appointed to the Board of Zoning Adjustments.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion that we reappoint Eddie Lael and Robert Smart to the Clyde Zoning Board of Adjustments, ETJ.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. And the last item is to request approval appointment of Susan Brown to the Clyde ETJ Planning Board, ETJ. Uh, Brian, same, she's in that one too, isn't she?
Yeah. Um, Ms. Brown has lived in Haywood County for 60 years, uh, she's lived in Clyde, uh, her, her whole life, and she wants to give back to the town, and, uh, the, the board, uh, Town Board of Clyde voted in September to have her appointed to the, the planning board.
Okay, so I'll, I'll entertain a motion that we approve Susan Brown to the Clyde Planning Board, ETJ, and ETJ means extraterritorial jurisdiction.
I make a motion we appoint her back to that EJT board, and I would like to point out in her application, she said, I've lived in Clyde my whole life and want to give back to the town, and she is retired, so, it's a great, uh, great line why she wants to serve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, those, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. Okay, is there any other business for the board today? We, we have no closed session today. Here and now, here and now, I'll entertain a motion we adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Yeah, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're, we're adjourned, thank you.